Everyone, please stand for the march of liberals. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes, you may want to turn that off.
It's still, I think it's probably not.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Sorry.
Any additions or corrections on the regular meeting minutes? I'll do these in three motions. Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
Kathy motion, Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Any additions or corrections from the executive session? Motion to approve minutes of the executive session. Brooke made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. And then finally, the minutes of the special meeting. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Kathy made a motion to approve, is there a second? Shirley second, all in favor. Close, and then one extension, Jess.
I'm sorry.
I've stayed, tell us when here. Approval of claims and payroll is presented. Motion to approve the claims and payroll. Motion to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Kathy, second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Anything on the white nation? Building permit number nine sixty-six. This is for Napa. They're wanting to replace one of their previous freestanding signs. It's fallen outdated. They want to put a new one on the west end of the building. It's a twelve-foot pole, double-sided five-by-six sign. This would be on top of the sign approximately seventeen feet above the ground. Tim has reviewed and has spoken to the owner. And he's aware that there is a height difference in his sign and what the code would allow. And he may be even going to vary to the county. So we could approve it, if this is intended along the... Right. Brooke made a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy, second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Margaret Mary, this is the third year that they have requested to put up a sign outside of the Schilling Center. And also a speed bump. This will be for two weeks, around October fourteenth through Friday, October twenty-eighteenth. They've already spoken with Brent. He's good and coordinated. So depending on what the board decides, everything else is in place. This would promote breast cancer awareness during the month of October.
This is their third year, I think, right from the start. I think it's gone pretty well in the past to bring awareness, so I think it's a good spot.
The first year, we received some complaints, but they were very few. And then the second year, we didn't see many. I think those people did not know what it was the first year.
Right, I think so. There's a sign, but I don't, I don't know that people knew initially what it was for. They'll have to sign as well, I'm very excited.
I'll make a motion to allow the Margaret Mary to put the speed bump on the sign for breast cancer awareness.
Kathy made a motion, Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Gearbox replacement quote for the base water plant. Tim had sent this out to the board previously. So the white letter to the grease varies. Went out to the grease varies and the motors on the brushes this morning, they found a west brush, small, a small west brush had a broken shaft. He told me they'd replaced the varies in the past, but this is the first time the shaft had broken on the brushes since ninety-two. We have a shaft and bearing stop, we need to replace the bearing and shaft to have and stop for future wear and tear. He's attached a quote for the gearbox replacement on the north brush. The representative from the American pump is going to be here tomorrow. And he wants to tell him to get the new box installed as well as repairing the small brush. They may be able to do it at the same time, just wanted to update on what has happened. And that quote for the gearbox was twenty-nine thousand one dollars. So I think he's looking for a motion to approve that, plus go ahead and order the replacement brush and bearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the gearbox replacement quote for the waste water plant. And for the rest of the part.
Brooke made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy, second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Next up, public hearing number one, Preserving Main Street Construction Grant Application. We'll go ahead and start the public hearing, turn to Jess.
On or about October seventh, the town of Brookville intends to apply for the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a grant from the State Community Development Lot Grant Program. This program is funded by Title I of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended. These funds are to be used for a community development project that will include the following activities. A historic facade revitalization and rehabilitation project located in the town of Brookville. This project will result in no displacement and any persons or business. The total amount of the CDVG funds requested is one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand. The amount of the CDVG funds proposed to be used for the activities will benefit low and moderate income persons is nine hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred six dollars and forty cents. The applicant also proposes to extend an estimated zero dollars in non-CDVG funds on the project. Interested parties are invited to provide comments to the town. But as of the deadline yesterday, we received no comments. If anyone in attendance has comments, please step forward. State your person, last name, and provide your comment, please.
So I've been trying to get information about what's been happening with the grant. I got a letter emailed to me on June third saying that we were no longer, what should I say, in the running or accepted or whatever into this grant program. I got a, and in this letter that I got, there was a phone number from this lady over here. I'm sorry, I didn't know who you were. I left two messages, one a week after I got the letter, another one two weeks after I got the letter. I have yet to hear anything. Got my ear to the ground, listening to what's going on. And somebody told me to call a person that would be able to help me out. Nothing. This grant is tax dollars. My money went into this grant. And I should not have to fight to try and get information to see what the heck is going on. I should be able to find out who the fifty-four people were that submitted applications. I should be able to find out what the rubrics are. I should be able to find out any question that I want to know about this grant. And I can get absolutely nothing.
Jess, who's the selection committee?
Story, right?
Right.
There's three outside. There were three outside of Brookville individuals and then two in, I can pull it up.
And the other question I have is that when I, when we went to this meeting that was at the golf course, the architect said that the buildings would have to be inspected before they could even move forward on putting a facade in. Well, hey, nobody ever even asked me about coming out looking at my building. And how do they know the twenty-five buildings that they supposedly accepted into the program, that it's just not like putting lipstick on a pig on the front of those buildings? Because I'll guarantee you, at least half of them have HVAC, electrical, plumbing, every other problem in there before they put a nice-looking facade on the front of them.
Well, in, in response to the interior, so it is a facade only grant, ACV.
But they explained that they were going to check the viability of the building before they wasted taxpayers' money to put a facade on a building that shouldn't have a nice facade on.
That is true. So the architect that we've occurred has done the inspection.
He never looked at my building.
If you're, if you are one of the final, of the...
But I haven't even been able to find out why I haven't, why I wasn't. I don't know what the rubric was. The question is that we were sent and answered, answered basically nothing other than if we wanted to spend money for any cost overruns. Hell, they haven't even studied on the building, how long are my cost overruns are? To say, well, I want to cover any cost overruns.
Yeah, so the, the way that the process works is that the, there was a selection committee, not the eyes of anybody on the boards, who don't have any input on who those individuals...
Who picked them?
The selection committee. So the five...
Now, who's the selection committee?
The five members. And you can, you can send Jess an email, Jess can provide you the names of the selection committee members as well as the rubrics. So if you send an email to Jess with what you need...
I'm already emailed, she's got my email.
Then we'll have you respond back to, you know, with those requests. But there was a rubric in place that the selection committee used that narrowed it down from the fifty-four applicants to just under twenty-five, twenty-four. Those twenty-four go through the planning portion of it, which is where, you're correct in saying that the architect come in there and decide the viability of the buildings. They would provide the rubrics of that, and if the building is viable, and then that would be moved on to the construction phase. And then that, that list of people gets narrowed down even further because there's no way that too many dollars would cover those twenty-five buildings. So there'd be another...
Sure, I understand that. So why isn't, I mean, this is a big thing for Brookville supposedly, right? So why isn't those, why isn't this information more available? I mean, my goodness.
Have you asked anyone from the Main Street group? Does the Main Street have been...
I asked eight persons, maybe two people from Main Street, and they said they had nothing to do with it after the grant, that it was all your guys'.
Simply not sure. Jess can also provide you the agreement.
I can't let go by what I was told.
Main Street has played a vital part in it, and they don't want to take the credit for any of this. They just all work at the end of the town, but they played a vital part in the selection coming up with the rubric. They were the ones that signed the rubric, knocked down, and backed out to the selection committee. So they absolutely have the information we need.
So do I vote to the chairman of Main Street?
I would suggest Brian Ellevant to main. They've been involved in every aspect of it. They've been involved in every meeting, from the conception of this all the way through today.
You're still in the company, right?
I am, and I do have that information. I sent it to you as well. Thank you.
So it is a public hearing. Is there any additional comments? Or it concludes the public hearing?
Sorry. If there aren't any, if there are no additional comments, that concludes the public hearing on the CDVG preserving Main Street construction grant.
A motion to close the public hearing on the preserving Main Street construction grant application. Brooke made a motion to close, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Do we need to take any action on...
There's a signature page that they're going around. We just need to get back as part of the required approval process.
There is a signature page circulating, so if you make sure to sign it today, that would be fantastic. Last up on the agenda is the resignation of Officer Jeffrey D. Stat Jr. He is trying to announce his resignation effective August seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you for the opportunity, skills and experience you gained during my time as a Brookville police officer. I wish you and the department all the best. Motion, we need the motion to approve resignation, Greg?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the resignation?
Accept. Motion to accept.
Accept.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
Kathy made a motion to accept, is there a second? Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Tim provided a...
Bid packet for the hidden valley sewer repair. He just needs it looked over. If anyone has any changes, let them know. He just needs it looked over and approved to put out there.
This is, this is in response to, we had previously put this out. We had previously secured the contractor, correct? And then that contractor is no longer able to fill?
Yeah.
So we need to put out the bid packet for other contractors to do it. I believe Tim provided this ahead of time. Grant, any issues here?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the bid packet as presented? Brooke made a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Gina also provided, building permit number nine sixty-seven, this is for Caleb Barnes. He dropped off his building permit today at three P M. See council approve, review and prove this this evening. According to his plan, it does not need setback requirements. However, his application states that he has been granted a variance from the county last week and now just needs town permit. And this is to build an A-two-third shed for storage of mowers and bikes located at five twenty-five Mill Street. So the variance has been passed, operating with a small, that small setback. It is one foot from the property line. Uh, six feet, about five feet. We could, we could prove the permit contingent law confirming that it did in fact pass the variance to the county for the damages. Should the board wish to also break the variance. I'm assuming if it did go through the variance process of the adjoining property owners from those side, they have a chance to object to the variance. What's that? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve building permit number nine sixty-seven based on the variance they received from the area planning commission.
Kathy made a motion to approve, ten to follow, the variance being passed by the area's... Motion, is there a second? Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Brooke, you have anything to add?
Just that the second treasure hunt is still available on Saturday at six o'clock, or sorry, Sunday at six o'clock.
Great, anything?
Yes, there was an incident of vandalism in the park that the, the young person involved, the minor, so their identity is not public. The young person involved is working with probation at this point and has an attitude of contrition. There was damage done. My understanding, volunteers have actually taken care of quite a bit of the damage. They've been speaking with probation. Felt it may still be appropriate to have the young individual contribute partly towards that. I think there was an estimate initially higher than this. But since volunteers have taken care of most of it, the suggestion was five hundred dollars. And then that five hundred dollars would be accepted by the town towards the damages, towards that memorial and potentially put toward, and then put towards something in the park, towards that memorial, towards something else to support that general cause. So if that's acceptable, I've got a victim impact statement. And then probation will present that to the individual's family and they can have an degree of adjudication to deal with that situation.
Is there a motion to approve the five hundred dollar...
Yeah, it'd be five hundred dollars damages in the victim impact statement.
Five hundred dollar damages on the victim impact statement.
I'll make a motion to accept the five hundred dollars and hopefully it's a good lesson learned.
Kathy, motion, Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Anything else, Grant?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So on an emergency basis, unfortunately, someone had it in writing that just to ratify it at a formal meeting, he was able to get the emergency, or not the emergency, the alternate counsel started, the alternate attorney started on dealing with the current issues regarding allegations of issues from that police department. I think he started to get in contact with people. Fortunately, I do not have a written engagement letter from him, but I would rather just get that ratified at a, at a non-emergency setting so that he can continue to work on that. The general terms of engagement is a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar per hour, which is his standard rate. And then he can get engagement letters. And basically, he can make a motion to, I'd say at this point, make a motion to give the president the authority to sign that engagement letter presented.
Any questions for Grant?
Uh, yes, his name is Tony Saunders from Newcastle.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Grant's special counsel for this issue.
Kathy made a motion to accept Grant's special counsel, is there a second? Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. Anything else, Grant?
No.
Jess?
I do. At a previous meeting, I had talked about hiring someone for the utilities department. I tried to reach out to that person and he had already taken another job. So in the meantime, we've had more resumes I've sent over. Tim and I interviewed someone yesterday who we both think is a plenty more than qualified candidate. He can start anytime, and I'd like to hire him.
You say the water or this water?
Water.
Okay. Did you have an application for this?
I had this, oh, I'm sorry. All I brought was his resume.
That's fine. And you intend to exit immediately?
Yes. They conducted a few the week before as well, but everyone was impressed with this one.
He has operator experience?
He does, and he worked for the town of Sonoma. So we did some water testing with them.
Where was he, the fire department? Ask someone?
Does it say where he lives?
He lives in mine.
Any questions for Jess? He's willing to start immediately.
Yes.
So the applicant's name is Austin Guy. He's starting a nineteen dollars an hour consistent for salary orders. Is there a motion to approve, we're hiring an awesome guy from the water department?
I'll make a motion to approve the application based on Jess and Tim's interview.
Kathy made a motion, is there a second? Shirley second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
Anything else? What about the golf course wifi? So Jess, I've been working with Great Plains. You see, Great Plains and Total Tech Connection. Total Tech Connection is the company that engineered the wifi expansion at the pool, the Schilling Center, the public spaces that we have, total phase-three grant, as well as the park. They went to the golf course because currently there's two different types of services there. There's a older version of it, and they've provided high-speed fiber optics to the building. As a result of the high-speed fiber optics, they have to re-engineer what their current system was. This would buy coverage in both the old building...
Correct, yes, correct.
Their current structure that we're using, plus the new building...
Yes.
Will be used.
Yes.
Plus, any outside?
Yes, and I don't know what the range is outside.
It won't be the entire course, but it will be areas, some of the clubhouse. The quote to perform the service for material and labor was three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Did they give a timeline of when they would start?
He said as soon as it was approved on the, on the email tomorrow or from now, and then they would give me a date.
And that's the main building plus the, the distant workshop?
Yes.
Yeah, I think for the sake of continuity with all the areas, I think it's a good idea to have the same companies do the golf course also, so I would be in favor.
Kathy, you made a motion to approve the quote for Total Tech Connection, is there a second? Brooke second, all in favor. Close motion, Carrie. And then, so another thing with the golf course, we have been without a countertop there for a significant period of time. Jess and Ron, the new manager, is wanting to utilize the newer building. It's obviously in much nicer shape, but they cannot do that without a countertop.
Correct.
My company has volunteered to install an epoxy countertop. I do have a disclosure for that. I'm asking the town to provide all the materials, and then he will provide the labor. It should be less than a thousand dollars in expenses for the town. I'm guessing somewhere around six hundred. And I'll have Jess over the proper materials, but our guys will be up there to provide that. Shouldn't be worried, you know, we accept that. But I do have a conflict of interest disclosure that I will file before, I'll file with Gina, have Gina file with her for the killing. Any questions? I think we should be able to get it done within the next two weeks, depending on when Jess can get the approval. I'll ask for a motion to approve, Jess, final material later.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to purchase materials for a new counter at the golf course and have Curtis's company install.
Kathy made a motion, is there a second? Brooke second, all in favor. Close, and then I just... Chair?
I'm just going to read my statement. In regards to the recent news cycle, I will not be making an in-depth statement due to ongoing Indiana State Police investigation. My department and I welcome any investigation into this matter. We will fully cooperate and anticipate it will show no wrongdoing by the department or I. That's our statement.
That's our statement.
Anything else, Jess? Shirley? I, I wanted to do one more conflict of interest disclosure, as disclosed in the previous meeting, um, regarding the sale of the former street department that I had a business partner, um, potentially interested in purchasing that. Um, Todd Saxton of Saxton Properties did that, um, bid and was the only bidder on that property. Um, so he is purchasing that property, Todd is a partner of mine in joint venture. So I wanted to do an updated, um, financial disclosure statement, um, just as a, kind of a bonus discussion. Any public comments regarding the agenda items tonight? If not, motion to adjourn. Brooklyn motion to approve, second?
Second.
Kathy second, all in favor. Close motion carried.